We'll go ahead and call tonight's the regular city council meeting to order. And for tonight's invocation, I've asked Alderman Heberlin to please do the honor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Father God in heaven, we truly thank you for your presence with us just now. As we proceed with the people's business tonight, we ask that you guide, that you direct us. And for our employees, we ask that you provide them with safety in their work. And for our citizens, we ask that you continue to love them as you love us as we go about your work tonight. We thank you for the change of season, Father. We do like the four seasons, but we look forward to the green grass and the green trees and the sunshine that comes from your heaven. As we go forward tonight, we again ask for your presence, and we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Could you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Larry Bud.
Here.
Sean Bertle.
Here.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Here.
Rob Heatherling.
St. Patrick's Day.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
I'm present, lassie.
Ray Coontz.
That's why the other guy, right?
Here.
Earl Walters.
All eight Alderman present. First, we have a motion to utilize the onma's vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meetings listed on tonight's agenda under the title "Onma's Vote Designation." Motion by Alderman Dorchinez, second by Alderman Jones. Discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
All eight Alderman present. First, we have a motion to utilize the onma's vote for approval of the minutes of the previous meetings listed on tonight's agenda under the title "Onma's Vote Designation." Motion by Alderman Dorchinez, second by Alderman Jones. Discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
The motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, we have an ordinance disconnecting certain territory from the city, this being the Evergreen Aviation property located at 2301 South Sprecher Street. I'll make that motion, Your Honor. Alderman Boda, can I get a second? Alderman Coontz, discussion or comment? Alderman Heberlin.
I understand that there's no water with this property, but is it the way that our ordinance is written, or is it a state statute that we can only annex property in consideration of water use, or cannot we annex property if it is contiguous with the city? Is it an and/or, or...
It's an and/or. I mean, any property that's contiguous with the city can be annexed at your discretion on a voluntary petition being filed, whether they have water or not. You have ordinances that say if you want city water, then you must sign an annexation agreement that if and when, or if at the time of, your property is contiguous, you must annex to the city of Taterville.
But that was the key word you mentioned, voluntary.
Yes.
If they don't want to annex, then you need the hole in the donut or something else.
Correct. There's other statutory ones that apply. The most common one that you folks have used is a voluntary petition for annexation. What happened here, as I understand it, is that the gentleman or these folks that filed their petition, I think because, I think it was Pam, because of the annexation plat that was prepared by the city engineer mistakenly, inadvertently included more property than what they signed for.
Well, the county put all four parcels of Brandis' property out there into one piece of property for one tax bill. So when the title company did the legal description, they did all four pieces of property.
Right.
And it was actually only supposed to be the northern two pieces of property that were to be annexed in, so...
So this is just going back and correcting what, on a voluntary petition, the parties only agreed to have annexed into the city. And through what she just described, the all four lots were, so we're going back and correcting that error with this ordinance.
So really, we have no choice. If we was to vote against this tonight, what would be the recourse?
Well, there would be some, because on the voluntary petition that the gentleman signed, or this company signed, only wanted the two lots. And through the mislegal description that was provided to the city, it inadvertently put all four, and they only wanted two. So in essence, then, you did something contrary to the voluntary petition.
But if these are the two northernmost parcels, would not then these two northernmost parcels be a hole in the donut, since we have annexed now on, or have city property on three sides, four sides of it, really?
Perhaps.
We're disconnecting the two southern ones.
Oh, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
Right.
And what's south of them is not in the city.
So these are the southernmost.
Yes, they are the two southernmost.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
And you would vote on this ordinance, Mayor.
Roll call, please.
Rob Heatherling.
No.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
No.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Mayor Breck.
Mayor Breck says yes, the motion passes seven to two. Okay, next we have an ordinance amending Section 4-1-12 to the city code, this being the spill or pay ordinance. Alderman Bertle.
Second.
Second Alderman Heberlin, discussion or comment?
If I may just comment, Your Honor, the changes, you've already been to committees, so they're in here. When, and this is, I owe this compliment to the city clerk, because she caught this, but starting codifiers, when you folks do ordinances, they on their own decide what needs to get capitalized or not capitalized. So Pam went through that and pointed out to me that, and we copied it from the city code, you'll see in here, from what you saw at committee, is the word "city," for example, is capital C. Or the fire district with a capital F and a D. So that's the only changes from what you saw in committee. Otherwise, it's the same substantive revision that you already approved out of committee.
So legally, they have no effect.
Correct. But Pam's right.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes. Motion passes eight to zero. Next, we have an ordinance amending Section 6-4-8 of the city code regarding the additional roadway, adding it to the emergency snow routes, this being the Langley Road from Cheney to Bratus. Alderman Walters, second by somebody? Alderman Coontz, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Brings us to city attorney updates.
One, a couple of quick matters, gentlemen. Since the last council meeting, the mayor has held two informal Liquor Control Commission hearings. And I say informal, because if you go through the extensive process, you've got to bring in a court reporter and actually have like a mini trial. This relates to two establishments, liquor license holders in the city of Taterville, who as a result of, I'll call it a sting from the state, were found guilty of serving alcohol or selling alcohol to minors. The state has already penalized them, and what the mayor did on one, what we put together, what we call an agreed order, where they agree to shut down their operation for one week, no liquor, no gambling, and a thousand dollar fine on the one. And on the second establishment, the proposal is one week and a seven hundred dollar fine because it wasn't their third violation. And the mayor is waiting to hear back from them as to whether they're going to accept that. If they don't, then we go forward with a formal hearing. But this is a quick, inexpensive way, if you will, to achieve the same result for the Liquor Control Commission, so the mayor's on top of that. Yes?
Mayor, I've talked with you before on this, and maybe you've probably heard this from me, but I don't think, and I know there are two sides to this issue, but I still personally do not think the fines and the period of non-selling, the alcohol they were just, is long enough. It's more like a slap on the wrist. One week, nothing. I think that personally, I'm just one vote, but I still think it should be a longer period of time that they can't sell the liquor and a larger dollar fine, because we keep having repeat offenders, and we don't seem to get the message across.
Well, I would point out, at least in these cases, technically, they're not repeat offenders. Usually, the employee that's made the sale is fired and then has their day in court. So as far as repeated offenders, the business may be, because they may hire somebody that just for whatever reason doesn't get the message. And anyone that's been in that position trying to, you know, control your employees, you can do as much as you can do, but they're still individuals, and they can still make the wrong choices. And I don't think anyone's found a way to perfect that yet.
Well, you might add, Mayor, that on the one that we're talking about, that actually signed the agreed order, as we read the state order, the state required them to buy a reader machine.
Right.
That is supposed to better able to control, when you put your driver's license, it's supposed to pop up and say, this is a minor or something. I don't, we didn't see the machine, but that was part of the order that the state came down. And we understand it was a pretty expensive proposition for the owner of the liquor establishment to buy, so...
I don't remember if that was included or not, but there was a $3,500 fine there.
$3,500 fine from the state on that one. So, and then this particular one, as we took the position, and we think we're right, is that if you don't have a liquor license, then you can't have your gambling machines. So that'd get into their pocket, too. So it's an expensive lesson from an employee, but we were told that employee was let go, so... Okay, the other thing is that this evening, you should have received it, you probably haven't got it. Mr. Walters, I gave him a hand copy, since he likes still, to this day, not to have an email address, but I've given all of you an email here shortly before the meeting, that I have forwarded you a copy of what I sent to Larry Laker of Laker Petroleum and to Metzger of CAM. Reaching out again, if you will, seeing if we can come to some resolution. And so you have it to read it. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me or the mayor. I suggest that you don't do it together, but just visually.
And thank you for the paper.
You got it. Regarding, a follow-up on your Blue Cross Blue Shield transfer brokerage firm, if you remember last meeting, Mr. Jablowski was going to take the, get the paperwork to make that transfer. We saw the paperwork, and we didn't think it was sufficient, satisfied your motion. And I think the city clerk, I haven't had a chance to speak with her for tonight's meeting, was going to be, just going directly with Blue Cross Blue Shield and say, hey, here's our motion, this is a letter, what can we do to get this job done? So I don't know if that's, she's in the process of doing that.
Cindy Brown.
Cindy Brown, good.
Making those contacts.
And then I think you've got a meeting, ordinance committee meeting on Thursday, and I hope to get all of you, before that meeting, by email, a copy of the revised abandoned building ordinance for your review before you walk in that evening. Okay? That's it.
Any other questions for the city attorney?
He did say feel free. Does that mean there's no charge?
From your end, that's correct.
You read somebody did that.
He didn't say he was free. That's right.
All right, moving on to mayor updates. If you read tonight's newspaper, I think you'll see another meth lab was busted this weekend, and so I want to commend Chief Herb Street and his guys, as they continue to fight that battle against this drug, and it just keeps showing up. And I think they're doing a good job of trying to keep it from proliferating, but it's a heck of a job. That stuff's springing up left and right, and I think a lot of it's David's, just because it's much easier, they found yet another new method that's quicker and easier to conceal, and so your fight's probably not over anytime soon. But...
Good morning.
Right, right. All right, then I just want to remind everyone to exercise their right to vote tomorrow. I think it was Franklin D. Roosevelt said, "No one will ever deprive the American people of the right to vote, except the American people themselves." And the only way they could do this is by not voting. So don't fall into that trap. The only other thing I have, on a possibly brighter note, I'd like to say that if my picks are good in the NCA basketball bracket, I will use my money to help the city and maybe get that 30-inch line in and repair some of the streets. So keep your fingers crossed. What's that? Yeah, well, I don't have it yet, I'm still working on it, but I don't care. Any other questions? Larry.
My favorite meeting, Allstrom's. Last Tuesday night, it was terrible again. And you all know that I live across from North Grade School, and sitting in my family room last Tuesday night, it was loud in my family room. Laura and I walked that evening, and the closer you got to it, the louder it was. And on Wednesday, while I was at the Y, a gentleman came up to me, and it woke him up at 2:00 in the morning, and he couldn't go back to sleep. And today, I talked to Mr. Haiti. He didn't give me any indication of when they hoped to be able to correct this problem with this equipment. I'm getting very frustrated with this. All we keep getting is, we're working on getting something done. And it's been since October that this equipment was installed, and we're still waiting. And there was another gentleman that was there that same night, and I'm not, I don't want to put him on the spot, but I think he would say that if you lived across the street from this, you have a reason to be concerned. And something's got to be done. And I'm not going to stop talking about this till they attempt to make some changes to this equipment. They say they've made adjustments, and it is better, but that night, whatever adjustments was made, didn't work. And it's still loud, and it's got to be fixed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Move on to committee reports. Discussions and/or motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and/or refer to an appropriate committee in whole or in part the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. Let me start off with the personnel committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From our March 6 meeting, we had one motion coming out of the personnel committee meeting. A motion to accept the cell phone policy as written, I offer that as a motion.
Okay, get a second on that from someone? Alderman Bud, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
The next motion was to allow Police Chief Herb Street to send one police officer to attend their instructor training at a cost of $2,000. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, you have a second on that? Alderman Coontz, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes. Motion passes eight to zero.
The next motion was to allow Police Chief Herb Street to purchase two HP Pro 3500 desktop PC computers and monitors from Patrick 411 at a cost not to exceed $1,574. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
Okay, you have a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Heberlin, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Final motion was to allow Police Chief Herb Street to send two police officers to tactical firearm training classes at a cost not to exceed $2,100. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion.
All right, can I get a second on that one?
Second, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ray Dorchinez.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Boda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Brings us to Water Environmental Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's a motion to forward the fiscal year 2014, 2015 Water Department budget to the Finance Committee. My name is Ernie Dorchinez, and I approve this message, I mean this motion. I'd like to make the motion.
Second Alderman Walters, discussion or comments?
Don't forget to vote tomorrow.
Hearing done? All those in favor? Aye. Against? Motion passes. Moving on to Lake Airport Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Hard to follow up on that, but I will try. We had several motions come out of the Lake and Airport Committee, the first of which was a motion to forward the fiscal year 2014, 2015 airport budget to the Finance Committee in the form of a motion.
Okay, you have a second on that?
Second, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Hearing done, all those in favor? Aye. Against? That motion passes.
The second motion was to approve the dates of May 18, July 20, and September 21 with the 2014 EAA Fly-In/Drive-In Breakfast, and to continue to offer the 25 cent per gallon discount of fuel sales during the flying hours of 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on those dates. I'm going to place that in the form of a motion.
Second Alderman Heberlin, discussion or comment?
Just a question here. Is this, who's sponsoring this fly-in breakfast? Would this be, fall within a special event?
This is the EAA Club, and...
It's their own event, they've held it there for years and years and years.
I understand, but it's on, if we follow that policy, it's on our city property, so...
And it's one of those, we decide if we don't want them, we don't have to, right?
Yes, one of those ones, yes. You just issue the permit without all the other requirements, but I think it would fall within the scope of your ordinance that you adopted a couple of months ago. So if you want to amend your motion to grant a special permit for that without the requirement of whatever...
Is there a way to do this when they have multiple ones through the year? You know, like, they used to have, like it does on these things, and so just one time, say...
You do it one time, and do all the dates, and put it on that form, and away you go. Simple. But I think it is a special event, if you want to follow your ordinance.
Okay. Mr. Boda, you want to amend your...
Well, I want clarification of my mic, Your Honor, because I was going to come into the next one with the same question.
Correct.
The Thursday evening, we have an item on the agenda for ordinance adopt special event permit and application, which currently is not approved by the city council.
Correct.
So do we have to include it in the current motions that are sitting here, since it is not an active ordinance already?
Well, you have the ordinance in effect now, and probably the smooth way to do this is to not vote on this tonight, and wait until your ordinance committee comes back next council, assuming that will bless the form. The form gets approved, and put these on the council, and approve it with the form.
Well, there's no...
Because you have the ordinance in effect now, that's the problem. We have the ordinance in effect, and we don't have the application approved.
Okay, so currently, there's no hurry on this one to move this along on these dates?
From what I see, it didn't appear to be...
No, so I can make a motion to table it this time, Your Honor, and bring it back to the city council, once we have this ordinance approved.
Well, the application approved.
Okay.
The ordinance is in effect. That's going to be handled on your committee level Thursday.
Thursday.
And then it'll be put on the city council for approval at your next meeting, first meeting in April.
So do you want to make a motion to table the next two, then?
That's...
Go ahead.
Can't, I mean, we're going to, as far as the people that I've talked to on my committee, everyone's seen the permit, nobody has a problem with it now, correct? And just by delaying these motions, we're, they're going to get their permit.
Sure.
So if he just amends the motions and to issue a special events permit?
He can do it, amend the motion to issue a special events permit upon approval of the application that gets approved. So that's not going to happen until the next meeting. We can't approve the application tonight, because we don't have it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Number one. And number two, it sounds like this is going to pass anyway, so there's not a big deadline here.
Okay, well, if there's not a rush, then, okay.
From what I read the dates, I mean, your first meeting in April, you get this all taken care of, you have your application formed and everything, hunky-dory.
I think, if I may, I think we had some questions today about this particular issue, I was talking with the city clerk, about some of the concerns they have, exactly how this will process through. Is that correct, Madam Clerk? We had discussed this particular issue, the permit...
We were questioning what we needed to do in the meantime, until the permit and application got approved.
Okay, then, once it's in place, and we want to make sure that, I guess one of the questions I have, I know Alderman Walters has brought things directly to city council because of the time window that he was approached by the organization. Are we going to be able to have some workaround when he does that? Let's say it's yesterday, they came to him and said, hey, we're going to have this thing next Wednesday, that we're going to be able to process this in a more timely manner, to be able to address these ongoing concerns?
Well, I think we had the assistance of the press, the media, at the last meeting to put an article in the paper, which was helpful. So the general public should know that there is a timeframe here. This is supposed to be a simple process. They come in, the city clerk, they fill out the application, your next council meeting, you guys up or down, or whatever you want. So, there's only gonna be about a two-week, maybe three-week delay. So, if someone comes at the last minute, they may have to be told no under what your ordinance is right now.
Okay.
But with the help of the media, the word gets out that you need to come in and just sign the paperwork.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that, I just want to make sure that everybody's in agreement on how we're proceeding with this. If we need to amend the motion accordingly, I don't have a problem with doing that, and that way, it's a go as soon as we're done with this ordinance approval.
Application approval, the ordinance is already...
Application, I'm sorry, application approval.
It's probably just as simple just to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and you got your application, that'll come ahead, that gets approved, bingo, then you've got the motions to approve.
So, you recommend basically a table?
Yes.
On both of these, these motions?
Yes.
I don't have a problem with that.
Can we table both motions with one, one vote?
No, it's just separate votes.
Would you like to make a motion to table? Table. Table, Mr. Voda.
Don't table it.
Yeah, yeah.
Go on.
You're gonna be sauced, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Well, it's 17, so...
I would like to make a motion to table on that, Your Honor.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Alderman Heatherling, discussion or comment?
No discussion.
One discussion. It's table.
I would still...
Oh, that's right, yeah, that's right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? That motion passes.
Your Honor, the next motion, I would like to do the same, is to table the motion.
Second.
Second, Alderman Bertle. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? That motion passes.
Okay, we'll try to move along with some action this time. Motion to accept the low bid of $14 per cabin cleaned from Ellen Sampson for cabin cleaning at the lake for the 2014 season, upon receipt of a signed contract and certificate of insurance. If the low bidder is not able to provide the necessary documents, the motion will be to accept the next lowest bid.
Second, Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Roll call, please.
Ernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
And the final motion was to forward the fiscal year 2014-2015 lake budget to the Finance Committee. I'd like to place that in the form of a motion.
Okay, you have a second on that?
Second.
Alderman Heatherling, discussion or comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Finally, we have a motion to approve and ratify payment of bills in the amount of
Your Honor, let me take that in the form of a motion with a comment.
Okay, Alderman Bud, second, Alderman Bertle, go ahead with your comment, Alderman Bud.
Okay. I would like to pull the UCM water main relocation bill for $50,743.33. There's $11,110.33 that I voted no at committee, and that is a part of this invoice tonight. I don't agree with that $11,000 cost. I voiced my concern that night. If we can just pull that $11,000 from this, that's fine, otherwise, then I would like to pull and we do a separate vote on UCM.
Okay, so it's just a matter of math. He wants to pull it, he can pull that, and so we'll just, probably the easiest thing, at least for right now, is to subtract that amount, and you amend your motion for the ones we are ratifying, and that new amount would be what? All right, and Sean, will you amend your second?
Yep.
To that amount? All right.
And then, do you want me to go?
Go ahead, if you want to read those.
Okay. Fuel for all departments, $18,689.37. Electric and gas for all departments, $12,784.93. Telephone for all departments, $2,369.87. Garbage was $1,821.50. Ace, Big R, Table Feed, and Urban Miscellaneous Supplies, $3,351.63. O'Reilly and Napa for miscellaneous supplies, $1,476.28. Glenbrunk, Quill, and PS Printing for miscellaneous office supplies, $2,183.50. Larry Berry for Services and Tires, $1,251.19. Aldi for the real estate rebate, $6,708.55. Altor for maintenance, $2,460.06. Green and Bradford for all departments, $21,731.82. The Police and Fire Commission for medical exams, $1,803.12. Police Department for a new F-150, $22,200. Street Department, Bodine Electric for maintenance on traffic lights, $2,167.44. Cargo, 104 tons of salt, $6,599.33. Rush Truck Centers and Drake Scrubs for equipment repairs, $7,487.31. Water Department Chemicals, $12,786.96. UCM for the water main relocation at the lake bridge, $50,743.33. Midwest Meters, $5,720. Lake Department Yard Heating and Cooling for the lake office heat pumps, $19,585. This comes for a total of $203,921.25. And the total miscellaneous bills for tonight is $7,011.47.
Right, thank you. Any other questions or comment? Alderman Heatherling.
What was the deduction? It was $11,000, what was the amount for UCM?
That's what I am voting no, really voting no on.
That is going to be the amount that's gonna be pulled from what we're voting on?
Well, we'll have to find a way to do that. Yeah, that's pulled, unless we re-add the thing, I think he pulled the full $50,743.33.
Well, you want with the other, it's $203,211.49.
All right, and then we would just have a separate vote on the $11,000, right? Sound right? Okay.
Have they been notified of a question on that?
Yes, I think they're all aware that we weren't happy with it, but they explained that it was because they were late, and we didn't, you know, because the breakage of the line, and that we had to wait and repair it, which the equipment they had rented to work on that week, they could not use because we weren't ready to go. We still think it's too high, but again, that's...
Okay. Still doesn't change my mind. Disagree with it.
Your Honor, I don't know that we have any really, any leg to stand on, any legal recourse that we can be dissatisfied with it, but it is what it is. I don't know. Let's have some more clarification from either Superintendent Wiseman or Superintendent Spiegel. I think we're stuck with it. And what committee you want to send it back to, if you're gonna have further discussion? But if we do, then I would request that we have to invite someone from the upcoming to the meeting.
Well, if we can go ahead and vote, again, on another amended amount, this, leaving the $39,000, they're just taking the 11,000, the new amount will be $203,214.9, right?
Yes, that's correct.
And so, you want to amend your motion to that amount?
Yes.
And Sean will amend his second, and then we'll have a separate vote on the $11,011.10, to decide whether we're gonna pay that or not.
Okay.
So, any more discussion?
Question?
Alderman Coontz?
We have two questions, Your Honor, either for superintendent or one of the chairman. On page, not that big of an amount, but page nine, it says maintenance and chili fest signs for the amount of $142.63. Can somebody explain what that was actually for?
Mr. Mayor?
The chili fest signs fell wrong. The Hollywood Commission is... They're gonna reimburse us.
Okay. And then the next one, on page 15, operating supplies, plates, coffee towels, Ron's produce, $170. Mr. Chairman, you've brought this up before, is that about the average of what you've seen, or is that, well, higher than usual, or...
I'm going to discuss that Thursday night at the finance meeting.
Okay.
Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Well, you gotta get Sean to a second.
He did.
Or did he?
He did that.
Just a quiet one.
I saw a smile, but...
Roll call, please.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Larry Bud.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Ernie Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heatherling.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to one. All right, finally, per sub-paragraph G of 5 ILCS 120/2.06, this portion of the City Council meeting is reserved for any person wishing to address the council on any relevant subject matters concerning the city. Would anyone like to address the council?
Quick question, I'd like to revert back to the Emergency Services Minutes. Mr. Bertle, I will...
Sean, I think a question...
I'd like to revert back to your Emergency Services Minutes. I took a glance at that, and I think you were wanting to ask me at this council meeting about an issue about tornado sirens, whether or not, did you want to talk about it?
All about the one that Mr. Kennedy would like to install on his plan?
And if everyone wants to turn to that first bottom paragraph of the first page of his Emergency Services Minutes, let me first say that Bill Kennedy and Kennedy Metal Products is a client of our office, so I gotta preface that. But I think the direction you ought to be going here is to do, if you're gonna do this at all, because I think you're correct, it does expose the city to liability by using your services to their private concern or what have you. If you want to pursue that, then you ought to probably think about intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Langleyville itself, and let them work with whomever they want to have services for them. You then have a certificate of insurance from Langleyville that will protect, be the primary cover of any incident that would arise if a tornado siren failed because our signal didn't get there in time. So, I don't recommend, if you're gonna do it, do an intergovernmental cooperation agreement, get insurance by somebody that's gonna back it up. That's my answer.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Alderman Jones.
Thank you. We don't provide sirens for Langleyville now.
But I think what they're wanting, I know that. So, the way I read the minutes was someone was, Mr. Kennedy was requesting, because he has a plan in Langleyville, is that the city would donate a radio and a board to operate off of the city's tornado sirens. He would maintain the equipment on his end and send out literature, that's how I read the minutes. And there was a concern at the committee level, well, how does that expose the city? And it would.
Yes.
So, if you want to follow that path, then you need to think about an intergovernmental cooperation agreement with an entity of Langleyville, and go and have their, they've gotta have some kind of insurance to add us an additional insured for that happenstance.
I understand that we want to deal with the municipality instead of an individual in this case.
Right.
But Langleyville is not going to be, I mean, although they will reap the benefits of any siren that's put up in that area, what would make them responsible and additionally insured for a private entity? That's my question, and that's what it was at the meeting.
Okay, I wasn't at the meeting, but the way I read the minutes was that Mr. Kennedy was going to offer his talents and expertise to set up a system that would service Langleyville, including his property.
Yeah.
So, you should focus then on the public entity of Langleyville and work in that direction. Otherwise, you're dealing with a private individual, and that's not the right way to go.
Okay.
From a legal standpoint.
Okay. Anyone in the audience want to address the council?
I'm in the audience.
Anyone else from the audience want to address the council?
I don't get it. I don't count.
All right. Seeing no one, I entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Alderman Dorcheness, second, Alderman Jones, discussion or comment? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.